Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Town of Comer Manor General Town Meeting. It is currently, this is April 10th and it's currently 7:08. And I will entertain a motion for us to go into a meeting.
I'll make the motion to state it.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion stands. This meeting is now in order. Thank you all. Good evening. The first order of business, we're starting out with our town meeting. And I will have a pledge allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now can we have a moment of silence to think about those who are shut in, those lives lost, those that we care about and may be in pain? Thank you. Can we have another moment of silence as usual for you to think about the things that we're grateful for in life, the things that keep us healthy, gives us nourishment, and our family and friends that we love and cherish? All right. Thank you all so much. Okay, we're sort of, so the next thing on here is the mayor's report. But I'm gonna go through the council reports first. Mayor, I mean, council member Blue is absent for medical reason. We excused her from the work session. Is there someone who would like to excuse her from this session?
I'll make a motion to excuse Councilmember Blue from the work session and also from the town meeting.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Any extensions? Okay. Mayor Blue is, I mean, Councilmember Blue is excused. Okay, I'll move on to council reports. Councilmember?
Oh, I don't have a ward report at this time.
Okay. Ward three?
Good evening. It's good to see everybody here today, mayor and council and residents. I really don't have a ward three report, but I just wanna say, before this meeting, we had a work session and it was on a zoning issue in my ward. And I was very proud how the residents all came together and came up with a good solution and how they worked everything out. So, thank you so much.
All right. Thank you. Ward four?
I just wanna thank everyone for being here this evening. I know that tonight's ordinance is in Ward four and I'm glad to see a lot of, just all of the wards here tonight. One thing is that there is an election coming up. And look into the eligible candidates, 'cause it will be May 1st very soon. So, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Okay, so the mayor's report. What I wanted to do is, I just wanted to report basically that there is an election happening. Formerly, the candidates are myself, Sadara Barrow, Michael Hale, the former mayor, and Jason Kern. And I am hoping to get your vote. I do wanna say that I didn't become mayor for any glory or any big thing. What I know is this, and this is my report. I grew up in not-so-wealthy a family, or, you know, we had food stamps and we had to suffer through a whole lot of things. But through the blessings of God and life, I was able to go to college. I went to college. I then got a job at a Fortune 500 company where I worked for 18 years. In doing that, I got trained in many different leadership classes and training. I became a manager. I was a general accounting manager at a Fortune 500 company. And learned, I moved on to IT and I wound up being a project manager and a project implementer. I've traveled the world implementing projects for a Fortune 500 company. And I've had many people who have worked for me in the past. I am a process improvement, total quality management. I was a total quality management certified process improvement person. I came to this town because I have had so many opportunities in my life and I felt like I wanted to share what I got blessed back to the community that I have. A part of that really is running the town and making it better, bringing us into the 21st century, helping us to grow and develop and take some of the things that I got. A lot of people would've moved, a lot of the people who went up the road that I went, we made a choice to stay here in Comer Manor when we have five children. We needed to find out how we were gonna house. And so, I'm just letting you know that this is, this is a love of life for me. This is not random. This is not just so that I can be mayor and somebody can say, "Hey, there's a mayor." I really want to put into this town what I have been blessed to have. And I hope that you guys will see it the same. Help me move forward with the things that we're trying to put in place now. And that is my report. Thank you. So, the next item on the agenda is the work session. So, the report out on the work session that was held on Tuesday, April the 3rd. In the work session, we met with the company that's putting in our new playground equipment and exercise equipment. On Newark Road Park, we will be getting new equipment. And he went through the process of everything and how it'll take. It'll be about two months and we'll have this new playground and also the new exercise equipment with benches and all these kinda things and whatnot. So, we did the final approval on the colors and everything. I'm really excited about it. We also talked about in the future having a naming contest, because Newton Street Park has just been Newton Street Park and maybe we can give it a name and have some residents come together. And so, in the future, we're hoping to have that happen. We also talked about our summer playground agreement with Maryland National Capital Park and Planning. They use this facility for the summer in the park. And so, we went over the agreement and certain changes that we wanted made to the agreement. Public Works, MOU, with MML. So, just so that you guys understand, Public Works, we tend to help each other out when one town goes through some sort of a challenge and so forth. But what happens if that's an extreme challenge and the federal government or FEMA pays the town back money for the disaster, the town that came and helped doesn't get paid back because they're not, there's no agreement for them getting paid back. So, now we have signed an MOU with the state of Maryland, all the municipalities in the state of Maryland, so that if we're coming to help one another and there's relief that comes back for that event, that the towns that helped also come back as well. So, we passed that MOU. A next item is the garden club had a fund request. We actually had money already put aside for, in reserve for the garden club along with the money that they had. So, we basically just moved that money into the garden club line item. We talked about, we went over the whole process of the incoming mayor's salary and what direction that, you know, conversation about where he wanted to go. And the conclusion in that conversation was is that we would take the question to the town. So, we will be, a survey will be coming out for you to fill out and get back to us before the 24th. We are gonna have a special meeting on the 24th specifically for the adoption of whatever will be the mayor's salary. And we will be opening the sealed envelopes at that time. So, we're asking everyone to drop off the envelopes. These envelopes won't come in the mail. They're gonna come to you via our volunteers and for every registered voter plus every household, if you're not a registered voter. So, I encourage you all, make your opinion known and then send the forms back to us. Then, we had a conversation about our budget schedule. We made out the schedule. There, the budget is to get to me by the 17th, to the council by the 24th. We're having, oh, no, we're having the budget work session. So, it's supposed to get to me by the 12th, get to the council by the 17th. We have a budget work session on the 24th. There will be a public hearing on May 8th for the budget and then there will be adoption in June, in June 5th. So, you'll have plenty of time to review the budget, see what you think. And one thing I will say, as I have done in the past, as I cut taxes significantly in my first year, I will not be raising any taxes moving forward. But we still are not, we not have gotten anywhere close to where it was four years ago. So, we're still way under that four-year marker from where we were. Next thing, we talked about a reserved parking space for a scenario for which a person does not have a driveway. They live on the corner and there is, and so they're yellowed out and have no real place to park. But there is a space there and in that particular case, we decided that we're gonna ask them to go back to Maryland National Capital Park and Planning and try to get the space that they do have that should be a parking space, a parking space. So, we'll work with that family on that matter. And that was it. We adjourned. So, that's the information from the, so the next thing is the treasurer's report. Mr. Baton is out today. He had another meeting, so Mr. Barr will present the report.
Thank you, Mayor. The treasurer's report for March 31st, 2018, the three-quarters of the fiscal year, prepared by Mr. Baton, shows that the town has received income for the fiscal year to date. That would be July 1st, 9th, pardon, 2017, through the date here of 1,378,000. Sorry, microphone's not on. We've received income to date of 1,378,084 dollars and nonsense against the budgeted total amount of 2,691,273 dollars. While that may seem significant, a lot of the big items carried in the budget for which expenditures have not been made or for which minor expenditures have not been made includes the 40th Avenue permeable paver project on which we're expecting $20,000 in our income. The Parks and Playground Grant from the Commission of $188,157, which we received nothing, but expect to receive all of this during the coming fiscal year.
No, in this year. You said the coming fiscal year, but...
This fiscal year. I'm sorry. Thank you, Mayor. During the last quarter. Red light camera violations are down, collections are down from, to 103,940 from 230,000 dollars. And that's because of the State Highway Project, which closed off the one red light camera that Comer Manor has for quite a number of months. Senior van income is down by about $18,000 and that's...
No, you don't.
A big pardon?
You can just go.
And that's a contribution from Bladensburg, which we expect to receive. And there is police state income, circuit rider grants, which we have not received, the landfill rebate, which we're expecting more, and income taxes, which only a part has been received. Majority of it being received next week. General government expenditures from the beginning of the fiscal year are 479,387 dollars and 20 cents out of a total budgeted amount of 950,870 dollars, which leaves roughly 50% of the expenditure still remaining, authorized, still remaining. With regard to public works, 173,042 dollars and 63 cents out of 299,477 dollars has been expended. And with regard to the Town Hall Center, 77,014, 77,000 dollars and 14 cents out of 118,320 cents have been expended. Public Safety has expended 227,894 dollars and 64 cents out of a total of 437,990 dollars expended, leaving roughly a balance of 210,000 remaining on the books for the final three months of the year. Other matters which I think should be called to your attention, Madam Mayor, are the assets of the town. Currently, there are 110,000 dollars, pardon, 110,128 dollars and 3 cents in our checking and our savings accounts. Accounts receivable shows a 27,725 dollars and 50 cent amount for property tax receivables. Those are property taxes that are, personal property taxes that are owed and which are expected to be paid on April 15th of this year or April 16th, that'd be the 15th. Yeah. Other assets include the Maryland local government investment pool of 876,278 dollars and 85 cents. Petty cash in the amount of 400 in the general petty cash account and 250 dollars in the police account. A deposit with the, for Wartman's Comp, an amount of 23,706 dollars and 82 cents. And other matters totaling, total grand total of assets of 100, pardon me, of 1,61,238 dollars and 64 cents. And that would conclude the treasurer's report for today, April the 10th, 2018. And I would ask that it be approved.
Okay. Is there a motion to accept the treasurer's report? Is there a second?
Accept the treasurer's report.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any discussion? So, I wanna point out that from, from a, from a scenario of funds, as we are working towards staffing up, getting a new set of police and so forth, we are considerably under budget in several different areas on this budget. We might assume to be at 75% being two, three fourths of the year. And for our general fund, we're 25% down, 15% deion under payroll. And furthermore, most of them were way down, except for the community center. And the reason why is because, as I said in the past, there's some salaries from general that are being put into community because we're cross-training now and people are cross-working and everybody's learning other people's jobs so that we all can be more effective. But, at any rate, it's pretty good. This place we are in the budget right now. And I will just point out something, council, that I will like to be checked as a part of our motion to accept. On the balance sheet, there are four items that are negative in the under liabilities. And there should never be a negative under liability. So, there's something that needs to be resolved there. So, can we accept this with that caveat that we find out what this, what needs to be corrected?
Yes. I'll make that motion to accept the treasurer's report with the caveat of the two negative items and a...
It's four.
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 Oh, I gotta, okay, I see. Okay. Do you want me to list the line items?
2013.
Line item 2030, line item 2105, line item 2110, and, ooh, social security, line item 2120.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's four. I mean, it's five. There's 2111.
Okay. And I'll also, 2111 down the bottom. I see it, Mayor.
That's a total.
Oh, it's negative because of the negatives. Well, okay.
So, technically, it's four.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Right. Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
Just surprised to see the social security warrant. That kinda stands out for me.
What's the number?
The one we just hit, the negative. That's all.
Oh.
2120.
It stands out. There's no question.
Yes.
Okay. Ward one, absent. Ward two?
Aye.
Ward three?
Aye.
Ward four?
Aye.
Mayor votes aye. Thank you so much, Mr. Barr. Appreciate it. Okay, the next item on the report is our, a police report?
Good evening. I'm Sergeant Sims. I'm calling in for Chief Lowry tonight. For our crimes for the month of March 2018, we had an assault at KFC between coworkers. We had a strong gun robbery at CVS on March 6th at approximately 9:00 PM. Three subjects wearing ski masks, gloves, entered the store. One of the suspects stayed by the front doors of lookout. The other two went to the pharmacy located in the rear of the store. The suspects demanded Percocet from the safe. However, the pharmacist could not open the safe. And when he told the suspects that, they started striking him, kicking him. They took Predazone and... Thank you. From the pharmacy shelves. The suspect fled on foot out of the store. Prince George's County Robbery Unit did respond and assume the follow-up investigation. The suspect vehicle was identified during the course of the investigation. And the three subjects that are responsible, they're also responsible for other robberies at different CVSs in the Washington metropolitan area. I had a report of a child abuse on Newton Street. It was a reported physical child abuse of a three-year-old male by an associate of the child's mother. The abuse did not occur in Comer Manor and the follow-up is done by the Child Protective Services. Sadly enough, we had a fatal house fire on Monroe Street on March 11th. And one of our longtime residents, Mr. William Mobley, tragically died in the house fire. The Comer Manor, Cottontown City and Bladensburg Police Departments provide an escort for their funeral procession. We had two thefts from auto in the Port Town shopping centers. Unknown subjects broke the side window of a vehicle, of two vehicles, removed items that were in plain view. A suspect vehicle was identified and the same suspects broke into vehicles in a shopping center in New Carrollton. We had a stolen auto on 40th Avenue. The vehicle owner left his vehicle running due to the cold weather, went inside of his residence, returned to find the vehicle gone. We had a theft from auto on 39th Place. An unknown suspect broke the back window of a vehicle and took items that were left in plain view. We had a total of, we handled a total of 90...
97.
97 reports for the month of March.
That's it? Okay. Is there a motion to accept the police report?
I'll make that motion to accept the police report.
Second?
I'll second it.
Call for a vote. Ward one is absent. Oh, well, I'm sorry. Is there any discussion? I have a question about the disorderlies. Do you have any, any specifics about, they're not domestic?
Dispatch, when dispatch calls us for disorderlies, it could be an unwanted person in McDonald's, an unwanted person in KFC, and we just go and we remove, tell them, you know, get their name, run them through the computer and move them on.
I have a question. On the check welfare, is that for the seniors? That you're checking on the seniors in the neighborhood or just the citizens that may live alone?
It could've been a call where dispatch called us to go check on the welfare of a Hispanic, mostly it's a Hispanic male who's drank too much alcohol. We get him to the hospital.
All right. Any other discussion? Okay. I'll call for a vote. Ward one is absent. Ward two?
Aye.
Ward three?
Aye.
Ward four?
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. Thank you so much, Sergeant Sims, for your report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And for your service. The next item is unfinished business. Before I even go there, I do wanna introduce a new person to our team, Jacqueline Goodall. She's a circuit rider from the state of Maryland. We got her for one day a week. She's working on our personnel manual to bring it into the 21st century and some procedures and also grants that we have available. So, welcome her, please. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. So, our unfinished business is the adoption of the ordinance 01, 2018. This ordinance was introduced in our last session. And this ordinance is related to parking. Actually, the parking ordinance, it shouldn't say permit on there. This is related to parking. This is a parking ordinance, which includes all the relative things about parking. So, we're having a hearing today about parking permits. And the reason for the change in the ordinance, or the reason for this hearing is because our current ordinance required that anytime we were going to establish a portion of the town to be residential parking, we would have to have a hearing. And so, being that that could be cumbersome, we wanna take that out of the ordinance. And so, that's what's been done. We have taken out of the ordinance that we will have to have a hearing in order to establish an area of parking. And as we go into the parking permit hearing, we'll talk a little bit more about what it is that we want to do about the parking. But that's the basic main change that's in this ordinance. And so, the ordinance has been out, like I said, we introduced it a month or so ago. And so, this is for the adoption of that ordinance. So, is there a motion for us to go ahead and adopt this parking ordinance? That's final.
Oh, I make a motion to adopt this order, order?
Ordinance.
Zero...
Okay, go ahead.
Dash one, dash two, oh, 18.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? I'll call for a vote. Ward one, absent. Ward two?
Aye.
Ward three?
Aye.
Ward four?
Aye.
The mayor votes aye. So, the parking ordinance is now passed. And the next item on the agenda is new business. So, as tradition, we typically get a table, the Maryland Black Mayors Gala, which is to honor scholarship recipients. And we'll honor our scholarship recipients as well. We normally get a table at the event in order to bring our winners and their families with us. And so, I'd like to, the table is $650. So, is there a motion for us to continue and buy the table as we've done in previous years?
I'll make that motion to continue buying the table for the Maryland Black Mayors Gala and it will benefit the scholarships.
And it come out the mayor council budget?
And have the money transferred out of the mayor council budget.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. I'll call for a vote. Ward one, absent. Ward two?
Aye.
Ward three?
Aye.
Ward four?
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. Thank you. So, that motion has passed. Port Town Youth Council's graduation banquet, as you know, Intime Harvest Ministries with the Port Town's Youth Council, they have a graduation benefit every year. The tickets are $40. And you guys should let Kayla know who would like to attend. But this line item is here because we have a graduate from Comer Manor and we normally give our graduate from the Port Town's Youth Council a... a stipend for a scholarship, if you want to call it. I believe it's been two hundred or two hundred and fifty dollars in the past.
I think it, it all depends on how many students that was in the program that was graduating.
We only have one this year. I meant per student, that's what we normally would have done. We've done, I think, two hundred or two fifty?
It was two hundred.
It's two hundred, okay. So is there a motion for us to give the scholarship?
Will I make a motion to give this scholarship?
Two hundred dollars?
Of two hundred dollars.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I'm gonna call for a vote. Ward one absent. Ward two?
Aye.
Ward three?
Aye, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I am three.
Ward four?
I am three.
Okay, and the mayor votes aye. And we can move on now to our committee reports. Mr. Mutchler, you have a senior report for us?
I have no report because I'm just debating my district office.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mutchler. Do we have a garden report, Ms. Epps?
Good evening, mayor council, Mr. Bayne, officer, resident. We have a cleanup from Inti Harvest Youth Ministry next Saturday from nine until twelve. We're working on the west garden and the east garden, putting soil. We're building three plots, replacement, we've replaced it, three plots. And we're asking, we do have plots available if anybody interested in it. We have applications on the table with the guideline. So please come out, join us, and thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our next report is the green team.
The green team is meeting next Monday at seven PM at Comer Manor Town Hall.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you, Paul. Okay, our next meeting, I mean, our next info is the recreation report.
We're gonna be having our appreciation dinner here on April the thirteenth from six-thirty to nine PM. We also have Zumba here, Monday, Wednesdays, at seven fifteen and Saturday at eight thirty. And the classes are hour, thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Okay, so I think that I will adjourn. No, let's go ahead and just, so we'll just citizen comments. These are not comments related to the parking hearing. We're gonna go into the parking hearing immediately after this. So if there's anybody who has any other kind of comments that's not related to the parking, you're welcome to come up.
Hey all, I'm Trina from Ward one. And I was hoping that we could also get the chance to hear from the other two mayoral candidates since we also got to hear from you.
I think everybody has to make their own opportunity.
Mr. Hale, Mr. Kearns, would you like to step up?
I mean, it's open, I mean, it's citizens' comment, as long as the comments are kept down to two or three minutes. Two or three minutes.
Good afternoon, citizens of the town of Comer Manor. Some of you all I know, some of you live on my block, and some of I know being council member and mayor of this town. And for those of you that I don't know, all I want you all to know, I'm not into this for money. I've been in this town almost forty-two years. My children, my son was eight when I moved here, he's forty-eight now. My daughter was three, she's forty-two. All I'm saying, this town has the potential, and whether you know it or not, we are the closest town in the whole United States to Washington DC. Think about it, we got a river right there. Look at the real estate potential that we have right here in this little town. It's a gold mine. All we have to do is get the right people to steer this ship in the right direction. They've already bought up and gentrified everything in DC. They don't have anywhere else to go. Don't sell your houses. I'm gonna say this to you folks, I bought my house in nineteen seventy-seven. I think I paid forty-two thousand dollars for it. I got a tax assessment for almost four hundred thousand dollars about two months ago. I'm not doing this for money, I love this town. And all I'm saying, I'm gonna be fair, I've always been a fair person. That's all I want. Let me help you get this place back on track. We, I don't know whether you all know it, there was a nun that got carjacked last night. I saw that on one of the email servers and whatever. The Burger King was robbed. You can't have one police officer cover this town twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, thirty-one days a month, twelve days a year. Some of this stuff is just ludicrous, it doesn't make sense. You know? I had a, somebody walking their dog across the street, let their dog poop right on the concrete. I know sometimes people are lazy getting up in the morning, but there's grass, let it poop in the grass. There's something wrong with the way some of these people think in this town, I'm telling you. And it's, it's primitive. And I don't want to get on, you know, preaching and stuff, but I'm a good person. I do this because I, my love of the town, it's not about money or anything else. If you vote for me, I promise you, I'll get it right. I'm through talking.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Kearns, would you like to make comment?
Jason Kearns, Forty-first Avenue. I just have a question, you guys just voted on the actual ordinance for the permit parking, but yet now we're having a public hearing on it? That's kind of, doesn't make sense.
The ordinance, that's why I had to say I needed to correct it on here. This is the parking ordinance, it's not the park, the parking permit are in the parking ordinance, yes, it's a part of it.
So wouldn't that be part of the public hearing, to where you could hear from residents?
No, we already had, okay, so this is the deal. So we've already had a, the ordinance called for there being a hearing in order to establish an area as a residential area for parking. And so for the hearing, it's about establishing residential area of parking permits in Ward four as a pilot, as part.
So by adopting the actual ordinance, what that does for later is you wouldn't have to have a public hearing in order to use the public, the parking permits wherever you want to in the town, is that right?
Right, we can just communicate with the people on the, on the street that we're working with and don't have to do a big hearing. Uh, yes.
According to what Mr. Kearns just said, are you telling me that throughout the issue of parking there's just people in Ward four, department Ward one, two, three? I mean, no disrespect to that, but I'm just trying to clarify.
No, I think when we get, when we get to the, when we actually get in the parking hearing, I'll do a preamble of what it is that we are wanting to do.
Now, is that issue gonna become an issue throughout the town?
But when we, actually, when we come out of this, when we come out of the, that, there is no yes or no answer to your question.
We have four wards in the town, you're talking about doing something for Ward four. I might ask you a question, are you gonna do for Ward three, ventriloquist Ward two, and Ward one? That's all I'm asking.
We are going to exit this meeting and go into the public hearing. I'll be able to give you a summary of what the expectation is, of what we want to do. And then we'll go into the hearing and listen to what everybody has to say. So if you don't mind, I'd like to finish, if there's any other comments here that are not related to the parking permits, then we can move forward. Okay, so is there a motion to adjourn the general session?
I'll make that motion, state it.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, do we have a motion to go into the parking hearing?
I'll make that motion to go into the parking hearing.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so now, we are in the parking permit hearing. So, one of the things that we're looking forward to doing with the parking permits are to be able to have parking permits throughout the entire town. And so what would happen is, you would come in and register your vehicle. There's actually, there should be a piece that was on the table here, Parking Permits Next Steps. And the goal is, the goal is to get everyone who resides in the town a permit. This was in the newsletter that was sent out a month ago. Inform residents to ensure their vehicle is registered to a Comer Manor address. In our last mailing, we asked everyone to ensure that their cars are registered to a Comer Manor address. This is very important because there are funds that come from motor vehicles to the town based on people living in the town. And so if you are not registered to Comer Manor, we may be losing funds. So that's an important piece right there. That includes not using Brentwood. Because the system can still wind up sending Brentwood our money. And so we are a town, Brentwood is where our post office is. And that's the reason why you here see Brentwood on your mail. Okay. So anyway, if you, if you need to change, you do not have to go to the MVA. You can do it online. The MVA will send you a card to carry with you with your registration and driver's license. And so if you need any help on that, please call the town hall, and the guys here can help you. Number two, the mayor and council are gonna adjust the parking ordinance to provide for a less complicated process in allowing streets to become permit-only parking. That's what I spoke to you about before, which is what we had done in adopting the ordinance before. Because the, the ordinance that they're speaking of, that was introduced over a month ago. So that was a time period for anybody to respond to any thoughts they had on there. But that was this point here, is to make it a less cumbersome and complicated process. This was introduced as an emergency ordinance two thousand and six eighteen. And there will be a hearing on four-ten to discuss the adjustments to the parking permits. Town, the town established the process to register your vehicle in town. The mayor and council have agreed to start in Ward four to test out the registration process. Registration does not mean automatic restrictions. We will, we will then follow up ward by ward. So after that, the limits to the parking, which is limit town parking to residential permit holders for certain times of the day in designated areas. We're proposing, starting in Ward four, we will have up signs limiting parking from hours of four PM to ten AM. As we test the impact in Ward four, we will continue to other wards, block by block. Initial anticipated outcome. We expect that cars belonging to people who do not live in the town will no longer be in town. Two, our revenues may increase as we get more of the MVA fees. And I'm happy to say finally, we're doing something. So with that, I will allow the council to make any comments that they would like to make about what it is that we're looking forward to doing and just their thoughts on it. And then we will hear from anyone here, and particularly if you live in Ward four, please do state your interest, since that's where we want to start. Counsel? No? All right, we'll start with listening to public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were going down the line.
Oh, I just opened it up to you all.
Oh, I apologize.
That's okay, I apologize.
I know since I've been elected official and lived in the town, I know a lot of residents are concerned about parking. I have a driveway, so I don't really have that issue. But I had, I have talked to several residents, and I know a lot of residents in Ward four. We hear a lot from, so I think that was one of the reasons why the mayor and council decided to go with Ward four first as a test pilot, because that was the most noise that was heard. That's it.
Okay. And I will say, Ward four and Ward one is where we really hear the most noise. So if this works out well, I think it's Ward one that we would then go to next.
Oh, I'm sorry, the mayor, the only concern, the only concern that I have, when we started in Ward four, as far as making sure the permits and stuff, I can see other cars being driven in Ward three.
Uh-huh. I feel that statement, I can feel that statement, we made.
Like I said, on my street, I, I know we gotta start somewhere, and by me going to other towns, twenty-seven municipalities, there's a parking problem in every town, not just our town. So this pilot program, I'm quite sure if it works, people will be watching.
And if I hear in this hearing that there's an interest for us to just go ahead and go townwide, we can, we can do that too, you know? So it's up to how people feel about it. It's a lot more work, it's gonna take a lot more time to get things up and running if we do it all at the same time. But I can understand your point that if you got restrictions up here, then other people might come down here, so I'm looking forward to hearing from you all. I know you're all here, so you got something to say. Please, come on up, state your street and your name.
Good evening, residents, my name is Felicia Fitz. I reside on Thirty-Ninth Avenue. I have a driveway that I purchased, and there was an incident on the street this week where cars were damaged. And that alleviated a huge problem, you know, it's been a lot of spots on the street, so that helped. It's just really shocking, but my other huge problem is I have a driveway. And there's only one vehicle there now. However, there will be two more vehicles there that will be able to fit in the driveway, but my problem is my neighbors or the others that park and block or feel as though it's appropriate to just, you know, pull up because it's a spot there. There's one spot, you know, and it's inconvenient when the weather changes. Someone put a car up and got an oil spill there, so it's, you know, tires are appropriate, but it inconveniences me because then there's just this air, one little area, I have to maneuver back and up, back and forward, or inform my neighbors when I'm leaving and going. You know, that's not appropriate. I don't have to tell, you know, they don't have to tell me when they're leaving and coming. So why should I have to blow the horn and inconvenience everyone else? Because I'm, I get taken from zero to a thousand real quick behind that when you have to go somewhere, so that's the other problem that I have with the people not being considerate of the driveways during the extra parking, trying to squeeze in and fit, you know, that's it.
All right, well, thank you, I appreciate that. I agree, I would suggest to everybody, be considerate as to how close you park to somebody's driveway. Because our streets are narrow, and it's very difficult to get out or in to your space when there's somebody that's this far away. So you probably know how much space you need from your own car. So, you know, consideration is always a great thing for us to do. Any other thoughts? So I got one ahead of you, I got one ahead of you. Yes, he's coming up behind you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Name is Zulu, I live on Thirty-Fourth Street, well, Lawrence Street. So my issue is, I do not have a driveway. I'm probably one of the only houses on Lawrence Street that does not have a driveway. And, you know, it's me and my wife, two cars, you know. Get home, she gets home late sometimes, and I would like for her to, you know, park in front of the house. However, my neighbors, they have more than one car. They have like four, five, six cars. And they decide that they're gonna park their cars wherever they want, whenever they want. But they have driveways. My issue is, they have driveways, but they don't care. They'll fill up those driveways, and then they'll just park in front of your house, and no consideration whatsoever. You know, and there was a little small incident when a new neighbor moved in like earlier this year, and they parked in front. And I talked to him, it's like, look, can you use your driveway? Because I would like for my wife, when she comes home and work late, she can park in front of the house. So he goes and say, well, nah, I ain't moving my car. And, you know, and that's just what it's gonna be. I'm like, oh, okay. So, you know, I think it's real inconsiderate, you know. The fact that, I get it, you know, you may have more than one family that lives in a home, but you gotta be considerate, the people who live there, like who actually live there and own the homes, allow them to be at a park in front of their house. So that's my main issue. And it's, it gets real irritating at times because you get home and like, wow, can't even park.
Yeah.
You know, lucky for us though, we do have that parking lot right there. You know, it's not too far, so, I mean, that's good, but at the same time still, you know, it's late at night, wanna be in a park in front of your house. That's all, thank you.
All right, well, thank you very much. All right, well, thank you very much. Again, I encourage people to be good neighbors. Anyone else? Yes?
I'm Doug Bowles, I live at 3602 41st Avenue, mayor, council, nice to see you tonight. So my, my big question is, what do we do with like visiting family? Will there be temporary parking permits? Are we gonna be charged for those temporary parking permits? How many per household, how do we acquire them?
So in the first phase of going out on this, and kind of the reason why we wanted to do a pilot first was to move around. So the first phase is when you're coming, you're gonna register your vehicles. So when you come and register your vehicles, we're gonna know exactly many, how many residential cars need to park on the street. So if there's, say, 15 cars, and we've got seven driveways, then that means that we need eight spaces on the street. So we'll measure out what is eight spaces, and this will be the residential parking between here and here. So the visitors, they can always park on whatever's left. So as we go through the neighborhood, when we're doing this, we might find out that there's like no room for your visitors. But that's something that we'll learn block by block. Because once we've established, okay, we need to have 10, or we need to have seven, and it's blocked off, one going this way, no parking, you know, residential parking this way and this way, just during these hours. Because your visitor, other than these hours.
If my dad were to come, say, and stay for a week, and he's gonna put his car, like on, I have a long driveway, so he could certainly park on my property, but that's seven days. So if he doesn't have some kind of marker on his car, will our police force be ticketing him because he's here?
In your driveway?
Or is this only on the street?
This is on the street.
Only on the street?
This is only on the street. So you've got friends and they all can park in your driveway.
So cars in the driveway will not be policed?
No.
Okay, thank you.
But they all have to be registered, because you may, if one day you're not parking in your driveway, you need to park on the street because your friend is in the driveway, you still have to have your registration for your own parking.
I know in other communities, they do have, town residents can get a certain number of guest parking passes.
We have definitely thought through that, I mean, we've thought a lot about that.
I'm sure.
And we were gonna go in that direction at one point, when we were looking at, I think I introduced, the last time I had introduced a proposal, it included that. But it, it was too complicated to figure out how's the best thing to do. But we may do something for someone as, you know, a week or more that is staying, because it is a little bit different, so as we go along, we'll see.
Okay, got you, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, Dorita F, 4300 blocks of Lawrence Street. So what is the hours you're saying that we are, that we, that the parking permit will be affected?
4:00 PM to 10:00 AM.
4:00 PM to, so is, a lot, we, people who own homes, they entertain, so we have people that come in, are they gonna be harassed if they're, because you're gonna have more than 10 people at your house probably, maybe more cars? So are they gonna be harassed if the cars have left there over that time?
When you say harassed, I mean.
I mean, we're not harassed, but get tickets or something like that.
Yes, they would get tickets. The idea is to make parking a priority to the residents.
Right, which I understand.
There'll be areas of town, or preferably, hopefully, even on your block, areas left over where your friends can park.
Right, okay.
So the limits will be based on the residents and making the residents the priority.
Just within that area and on that street, so that, out of that, we have to find somewhere else to park?
Maybe further down the street. I mean, the idea is that, is it, should the resident who owns the house have to park all the way down to the corner and walk to their house?
Right, no, I don't agree with that, right.
Or the guests, so then it would be the guests who has to park all the way down the street and then walk up, because, you know.
So would these parking spaces have the house number assigned to these parking spaces?
No, for the residents, it'll just be arranged of where you can park.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi, my name is June, I live on Lawrence Street as well. My question is, if you provide everybody in the town with unlimited parking permits, so if you have a driveway, and I have eight cars, you're giving me eight permits, so what is that gonna help resolve or?
So we'll be counting, and if there's 20 cars that register on a block, and 10 of the houses have driveways, we're only going to put residential parking for 10 vehicles. So we're gonna subtract the driveways from the total in terms of how much space we give you to park. And if for some reason, somebody has multiple cars, which we, you know, we might learn as we go along, this is just the way I'm thinking, we're learning as we go to see what we get. But in all fairness, we start with counting who has, you know, what's there.
Okay.
I'm listening for that idea.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not really understanding how that's going to help with the parking issue.
The first part would be making sure, like the conversation we just had, that your, you as residents have priority parking rather than friends coming over, that's, that's one. Number two is, I can give you an example. There's a couple places where I actually know that they, people who don't actually live here, leave their car here. And they, they may have extra cars, they live in neighborhoods with restrictions like we're about to do, and they can't park multiple cars in their town, and they'll leave their car here. So that will cut that out immediately. And I, and I, I think that's more of that happening than you might realize. And, and then there are people who let other people park here, who are their friends. Like, somebody might live in DC, and they have a friend that lives here, they let them leave their car here because they can't park in DC somewhere. And so this is happening, and that's the first piece that we can rub out and get rid of that part. And then we can see what else happens after that.
And I can only speak to what happens in my block. That's not an issue with us, I think the issue in our block is more so multiple cars and people not respecting your neighbor. I shouldn't have to come home and not be able to park on the street because my neighbors have two cars parked in front of my house. I don't own the street, but it's a matter of respect.
I agree with that.
Thank you.
I agree with that, thank you.
Hiya.
Hello.
Melissa, I live with Trina in Ward 1. All right, so I read the parking permit ordinance, it looks like there's gonna be a charge for parking permits, is that what I read correctly?
That should have been taken out.
Yeah, that should have been taken out.
So there's no charge for us as residents?
Right.
And then there's no charge for us to pick up visitor passes? So like, that gentleman's example, my dad's gonna park in my driveway for a week, my dad's not gonna park in my driveway for a week, he's gonna park on the street. So how does that get handled?
We're gonna have to work on it. Because the idea was that we wouldn't have to, the edges of the street would become the places where visitors would park, you know, the space that's left. But I think if you have a circumstance, let's say, a handicap or a circumstance that's, it's temporary, but it's a handicap or senior situation, that I think we can do with that one-on-one until something evolves as a better solution.
Okay, and so I'm allowed to park in my driveway, just, right, and I'm allowed to park in front of my driveway without any hassle, right? Okay, so that's, okay. Then the other part of my question is, okay, so we got rid of the piece.
And just in my mind, you can let your friend park in front of your driveway, it's yours.
Okay, all right. And so I, I can see what you're doing, you're like doing the math, you're like, I got this many cars, I got this many spaces, da-da-da-da. So I can see that, but we all live on streets where, so let's say, Felicia and I, we live on the side of the street where everybody parks, right? But nobody's allowed to park in front of our neighbor's house across the street because that's the way our streets go, right? You can only park on the one side, right?
Right.
So we live on the parking side, right? So when you're, when you're divvying up these spaces, you're saying that the houses on the end, that's where visitor parking is gonna be? So we might not end up with resident parking kind of in front of our homes if we're end houses?
Yeah, that could, that could possibly happen. I mean, what, I mean, what I think when we doing the blocks, when we're setting everything up, we look at where we're turning into, you know what I mean? It's like, I'm not wanting to put something totally in stone. The only thing is getting the permit first, but then we have to look at the scenarios that we run into. We might run into a scenario where there's not enough room on that block to accommodate the cars that people have.
Right.
And so then, as a, as a block, we're gonna have to come together and then talk.
Okay.
And say, okay, so this one didn't, this block didn't work so great. So we need to come together and see how the family of a block family would work out.
Okay, all right. So that's a to-be-determined kind of conversation.
Yeah, yeah, because I think that once, if we find out, if we run into that problem, there's, in my mind, there's nothing we can do but bring those residents together on that block and say, how do we resolve this? Personally, one of the things that I wanted to say is that, I'm hoping that where we wind up with this is that maybe people who have multiple cars that are not multiple people, meaning like one person has four cars or five cars, that maybe they'll be generous enough to park their cars in another area of town, the extra ones that they don't drive. Well, we were talking respect and how we can be helpful to our neighbors here.
Hello, everyone, 4210 Newton Street. I have a concern, thorn, bee thorn. I am Ward 3. So if we're talking about making this change in Ward 4, there's a possibility that all these extra cars could potentially move into Ward 3 for parking. So what, how long is this gonna take? Like, what's the process? How, how long do you think we're gonna try this out for Ward 4?
So as Councilmember Jackson mentioned, the same thing that you just mentioned, I think probably in hearing that, and like I said, I'm listening to hear what everybody has to say, I'm thinking maybe it makes more sense just to go in the whole town, because it's a relevant point.
Okay, because I'm, I park, I, I live on the side where there's no parking, which I absolutely love. Because I don't have to worry about cars that don't belong to me parking in front of my house. But I have my neighbors who do have four or five cars in their driveway, and then they park on the street. So I'm just concerned that what we're doing is just gonna eventually just start pushing people who don't have residential onto other streets, and it's just still gonna be frustration.
So the way I would move forward, if we're gonna do the whole town, is get everybody registered first before we put up any restrictions. And when we put the restrictions up, we put them up all at the same time. So we don't have that, I mean, it's a real relevant point, I didn't know, I didn't think about it, so, yeah.
Hey, all, Trina again, 34th Ave. What I'm thinking will happen is that people will begin to realize that they can park at the end of their driveways instead of maybe getting their friends visitor passes. And because our streets are so narrow, something I'm worried about is that we won't be able to drive in both directions anymore because there won't be those driveway spots where one person can dip into, does that make sense? So right now, if you're, if you have two cars coming in different directions, someone has to go into the driveway spot so that the other car can pass. So now that people will most likely be blocking the ends of their driveways, those spots won't be open anymore. And so I'm wondering is if there's been any consideration to turn our streets one way?
There has been some conversation, I'm saying, what I'm thinking is, if we can try this first, I wanna definitely say that's not off the table.
Cool, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Jason Curran, 41st Avenue. I would actually like to see townwide too, with the residential parking, because we do have it, you know, we know, my street alone, they bring vehicles in the morning, drop them off, do the same thing. My question is, if we all register our vehicles through MVA, do we have an idea of how much the town would get from that revenue?
I don't know the number.
Would that be helpful with the signs, to pay for the signs and stuff like that for the first round?
Yeah, to make up for, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I live on Lawrence Street in Ward 4. What is, what would stop people?
Your name first.
Oh, Laura Lucas, what would stop people from, that cars are not registered, but they move in with someone, or they stay for a while? And what would stop them from registering their cars to that address? It may not be registered now, but they were registered to that address so they can get a permit, so they can park in that, you know?
If they're staying here, they should be able to register their car here.
Okay, and maybe they wasn't, but they move in, and someone might move back out and move back in, and it's?
If somebody lives here, they should have a right to park here.
And then they have five and six cars for that one house?
So you're talking about when there's multiple people living in a house that have cars?
Yeah, they're multiple with multiple cars.
Well, the only limit that we can do, go by, is the law, which I think is, and don't quote me on this, but I think that you can't have any more than four unrelated, five unrelated people in a house? I thought it was four.
It's five, I believe, but that's been litigated, and the result is that... Mr. Varrick? The matter has been litigated multiple times, and the result is that you have different court decisions on a similar subject in multiple counties. And the Court of Appeals of Maryland has not made a definitive decision on that. It was five unrelated persons, according to the zoning ordinance of Prince George's County, which is controlling here. I don't know what the ultimate result will be if the matter would be brought to the Court of Appeals again.
Is this, are they bringing it to the Court of Appeals to reduce that number? Or is it the opposite side of somebody else who says it's too high?
Well, the, the, the problem is, one of association, freedom of association, where individuals say that five is too restrictive.
So the case, just, just so I can understand, the case that is up for appeal right now is?
There is not.
Oh, there's not a case up?
No, there have been cases in the past.
Oh, there have been cases in the past. But from a legislative perspective, from a legal perspective, right now, the law says that in a single-family home, you can have up to five unrelated people.
Unrelated individuals.
Individuals.
If you, when you have more than that, it turns it to a roomy house.
Exactly, so more than that. So at this point, it's, that's what's, what's running this. If there is five people in the house, five people can be in the house. But if it's above five, and you know it's above five, definitely report it, because that's a violation.
So five people that can live in the house, and they have five cars, there's a car per person, some people have two cars, per, you know, one person, so you got five to six, you know, get more cars than people.
I know, that's why we're gonna look at it block by block and see what it turns out to be.
Even though they may be related, you have these people come, because you have a house, they come and move in with you. Now, they're your relatives. But they're moving in with you, so they're bringing cars, and they bring, you know, you understand what I'm saying?
I do, I do.
And they're taking up space.
I do understand.
All of a sudden, they just show up, you know?
Right, yeah. But unfortunately, if they are living in that space, and they're within the law, they have a legal right to park on the street just like you do, even if it's five of them in their house and one in yours. The thing that frustrates me the most is when people have multiple cars and they don't put them in the driveway. They have all their cars on the street. When they could put the cars they're not driving in their driveway, you know? That's the one that frustrates me the most, is people do that.
But someone filled the driveway up, and so many people, didn't have to park on the street, you know? It's a lot of cars.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So we gotta follow the law in this particular case.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Felicia Fitz, 39th Avenue. How long is this supposed to be for trial?
For?
For this whole situation? I mean, I understand it's, it's new, and you gotta start somewhere, and it's gonna be a whole bunch of issues, but how long? Because there's gonna be fees assessed, you know? People can't keep getting ticketed over and over. I heard the, you know, the financial report about the red light, all it took was one time for me to get that red light, ain't nobody gonna keep on doing that, you know? So we gonna learn our lessons, but if you live there, you're gonna have to keep getting that ticket and taking the L, and you can't just keep doing that, or it will, after the trial basis, however long you figure out you... and you can't just keep doing that, or will, after the trial basis, however long you figure out you're going to do it, those residents who ended up getting a substantial amount of tickets, can they be reimbursed if it doesn't introduce itself to the whole town, or something like that?
Well, basically, from the comments that I'm hearing, and what people are saying is, they're suggesting that we do do the whole town at the same time.
Okay, I mean, that would be appropriate to.
So, I'm fine with that. We can just do it all at the same time, we'll get everybody registered. By the time we got, after we get everybody registered, boom, all at the same time.
So, again, for the trial basis, I mean, it's going to be a lot put in towards doing this, it's a huge effort. So, you wouldn't want to just put it on trial for like three to six months, or a whole year, versus, you know, and then it don't be nothing out of it, and back to the same situation?
Right.
So, you don't know yet about how long you're going to trial this thing out before it's permanent?
If we do it, you know, I think what, in my mind, I see is that we're going to wind up in a block-by-block situation, and working with each block, which might be really good, too, for people to come together in the block, and then work out, okay, you got too many cars, this one's not working out, whatever, and keep it fluid. And in that case, we can just keep it permanent, because we got it fluid, and we can move it around.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, residents. My name is Trish, and I'm from forty-third and Lawrence, and I have a concern. With the permits on Lawrence Street, my husband and myself, we live on the right side. So, on the left side, you cannot park. Now, we have some families there that, of course, they will have six cars. So, now, when they get the permit, are they going to be parking on the right side of the street in front of our house? You know? And if, and if it does help, there is a huge parking lot that anyone, families, welcome to park there.
What, what hundred block do you live in?
Forty-third, forty-third and Lawrence.
Oh, forty-three hundred, okay.
Forty-three, yeah.
So, you're at the parking lot? Right, we all have one side of parking. All the parking, right, the person, I mean, unfortunately, the person who's on the non-parking side does not get the benefit of parking in front of their driveway.
Correct.
Only on the parking side can you park in front of your driveway, the others.
Yeah, so, that's why I'm very concerned now, so that will trigger them to be like, oh, fine, we have permits, so we could park in front of Zulu's house, which, you know, we pay taxes, we own the home. They're coming there with three of their families to help them. Then, they grow to get their own house and they move out. But until then, you're convincing me, who coming home at two, three o'clock in the morning? You want me to park a block down to walk? No, that's, that's not right. Sadness, if y'all could look into that and see.
You mean, that's back to the one-way parking, I mean, one-way streets?
No, our street is on a two-way, but what I'm saying, once you come in from, what is that street? Bladensburg Road, and make a right onto forty-third, and then you make a left onto Lawrence?
Yes.
Our house is on the right-hand side, you are allowed to park there. But you cannot park on the opposite side.
Right.
Because the streets are very narrow.
Right.
So, the issue we're having is the families on the left side comes and park in front of our house, which is on the right side of the street.
But they have to have the right to, I mean, just because we park on one side of the street?
I think they have driveways, right? They have a driveway, they have a big driveway. They have driveways.
So, you're saying they're, they're not parking in their driveway?
They're not, they're not, because we're the only house that, we do not have a driveway.
You do not have a driveway.
And most of the times, what I physically see, their families will come six in the morning, switch our cars, and park alongside our house. But, you know, it was, the car would stay there three, four days. You inconveniencing those people who actually live there.
Well, that's, well, that, this will handle, because if it's not, you're not actually living here, and you actually don't have a permit, then you need to park in another place in town during residential hours.
And that big parking lot that we have, they're welcome to park there.
Sure.
You don't live in the house there, you're just there temporary, because you're helping your aunt, your uncle, or whatever, pay rent. So, park in the big parking lot right there.
And that's what will happen, because they won't have a permanent address there.
Okay. Okay, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Again, on Lawrence Street. Question, who's in charge of, if you notice, in a driveway, that there's a car that doesn't have a license plate? Or there's a car that's, the registration has expired? Is that code enforcement or the police department?
It's generally code enforcement that handles it. And, and just as a sidebar, I want to update you guys right now, because we've already started the process of hiring a full-time code enforcement officer along with Cottage City. We're going to do it together, like we've done with the chief. And that way, we can bring in somebody with benefits and all that kind of stuff, so they can go back and forth as needed, whatever we need to do. But, yeah, that's typically a code enforcement activity.
Okay, and just one other thing. Is it possible that I could get like a neon sign in front of my house that says, June's Parking Only?
Oh, my. Well, we all love that. And I also mentioned that the chief and the sergeants, they've done a significant amount of interviewing, and I think we're in phases of security checks and all that stuff right now in terms of hiring officers. We're, we're doing backgrounds now, so it'll be soon that we'll have some officers again. And I just want to make sure everybody is clear. The transitions that we've had to make here, we had to make them, there were reasons. So, it wasn't just anybody, they just abandoned us and left, and they couldn't stand it here, what? There were some significant reasons, and you'll be happier, you definitely will.
Trina again, thirty-ninth Ave, I had two questions. My first is, have you considered the style of stickers that you'll be getting? And if we'll have to re-register every year or so?
I was thinking two years, in terms of the registration. But, okay, so, we have talked about styles. I'm trying to recall right now.
Are they actual stickers, static clings?
Right, we, actually something that sticks to the inside of your car. So that, because if we do, if we do the dangling ones?
No, no, that's not good.
There's no relevance to it, right? And so, for the inside of your car, so somebody's not tempted to try to take your sticker from you. But I, that, I believe that's what we and the chief talked about, because that would be the type.
And then, I just had this idea while sitting there, so it might be totally, it might be totally wild. But perhaps with some of the revenue that we gain from the tickets, if there might be a grant program to help people build driveways, if they have that amount of land? I know that some of the houses that don't have driveways, it's physically because they don't have the land to build them, but while I was sitting there, just an idea to consider.
That's good, okay, thank you very much. All right, any other thoughts? Okay. Am I getting a general sense that do this all at the same time is what we all want to do? Okay, all right, well, then I think that's the way we'll go. Council, oh. Okay, so, this is my thinking, and the question is, if you didn't hear it, are we going to make it restrictive in the overflow parking? So, this is, what I'm thinking is that if when we count up the number of cars that need spaces, are more than what that block can handle, that we'll literally mark the number of spaces in the overflow for residents only. So, they would, so it's not the whole, but we'll make sure that there's enough spaces, so we'll use that to do that. Okay? Anybody? Council? All right, I thank you all so very much. I feel like this has been really, really productive, and that we're actually going to be getting somewhere, and, and I'm excited, I hope this is, this is going to work out, I know it is. So, with that said, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
There's a motion to adjourn the meeting.
All right, all in Flavio, say aye. Aye? This meeting is now adjourned, thank you all so very much.
Thank you, thank you.